Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the Spokane City Council briefing session. Ms. Fister, would you please call the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Oh, present.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmembers Oppone.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
All right. I don't think we have any interviews today. So let's go to the tonight's agenda for changes so that they can get put into the system so people can sign up at 5:00 PM in case we have a long discussion. And so the first, there's a request to add items seven and eight and nine on the consent agenda. That would require, and seven and eight are eviction assistance funds, and nine is reimbursement of funds from Washtot on Wellesley. So I don't think they're controversial, but I need a motion to-
So moved.
-suspend the rules to add items to tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding items seven, eight, and nine from the consent agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? All right. Next.
Excuse me. Was that a motion to suspend the rules first?
Oh, sorry. We didn't.
Yeah.
Yes. That was my-
We suspended the rules. Did I make-
We didn't vote on the-
We didn't vote on the suspend the rules?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll just go first in a second.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor of suspending the rules for the purpose of adding additional items to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, nay? No? Excuse me? Any?
Not that verified.
Okay. Any abstentions? All right. The rules are suspended. Is there a motion to add items seven, eight, and nine on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. All right. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right. Those items are added. Thank you, Ms. Fister. And now we're down to special budget ordinances. The rules are already suspended to allow additions. Ordinance 36382 and ordinance 36384 and ordinance 36385. Is there a motion to add them to tonight's agenda?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Any discussion? We'll be getting briefing on this in a bit, but any discussion? All those in favor?
Yeah, sorry. I am, today I missed out on it. Well, what are the items being added?
Sure. They're the special budget ordinances. One is for a FIRE FEMA grant. Another special budget ordinance is for emergency rental assistance. And then, well, that's one. And then the third one is also emergency rental assistance. And we'll get briefed on it in a bit, but just in terms of adding to the agenda. Any other?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? Okay. Those are there. Mr. Wright circulated a special consideration two for the letter to the Department of Health regarding the opioid service center location. Is there a motion to add that as a special consideration tonight except for next week, but we'll get it out the door unless-
So moved to add.
Okay. Second. Any discussion?
When did he send it? Sorry, I don't, I just, I didn't get it or didn't see it, I guess.
I can resend it.
Okay. Why don't you just resend it? And right now, we're just adding it to the agenda.
What's just like the high-level change?
Oh, it just says, "We are not in opposition to the location, but we wish the process had been better."
Okay.
But since the lawyer wrote it, five or six paragraphs to say.
A lot of the ones.
Any other question about adding it to the agenda? All right. All those in favor of adding to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no? Any abstentions? All right. That's added to the agenda. Then we are now on to first reading ordinances for this week. We had a discussion of public safety about an alternative ordinance. So would it be a motion to add as opposed to a motion to substitute?
And I'll make that motion. And the ordinance was given to all the council members by Mary. She sent it right after.
Well, I just sent it.
You just sent it. And she sent it, then he put the numbers in. You all have it in your inbox.
I can't see track changes. Is it just that section one under enforcement that was changed?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the only change. It removed the provision that said they could not be booked into the jail so the officer's discretion to cite or arrest and book into the jail. And then the only other thing was I added the ordinance number that Ms. Fister gave us.
Okay.
So, all right. So that's your motion is to add it. Is there a second?
Second.
And the motion is to add it for first reading tonight and final reading next week. Okay. That's, yeah. Okay. Any discussion about adding it? All right. All those in favor?
Yeah, sorry.
Yep. Go ahead. Councilmember Bingle, greetings to Philadelphia.
Yeah. If you guys want to know about risk-adjusted return, I can, I can explain it to you.
Okay.
But no, so I guess just, this will come later. I apologize. This is the wrong time to do it.
Okay. Yeah. This is just adding it, reserving discussion on it later. Okay. All those in favor of adding it to first reading ordinance and final reading ordinance next, first reading ordinance tonight, final reading ordinance on May 8th indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, no? Any substitution? Excuse me. Abstentions? Okay. All right. That's added. And then that's already on. Okay. But the question is whether or not we table the ordinance on first reading C36379, or do we have both of them on for a vote next week?
I guess my preference would be to leave them both. I'm fairly partial to the simplicity of the safe open spaces, and so I would like to continue with that, but.
And it doesn't, it won't affect testimony tonight because there's just one testimony about that, but I don't know. It's up to you.
I think it gets confusing when you have two ordinances that are very, very similar at the same time. I think it makes more sense to-
All right. Well, I'm just the chair. Someone has to bring their motions, whatever they want to do, so.
Well, hang on. Sorry. Sorry, my hand up. But I did want to make a motion to substitute first if possible.
Okay. Well, okay. So you're, you're moving to substitute the version of the ordinance that you circulated earlier today-
Yes.
-for C36379. Okay?
Yeah.
All right. That's your motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Could I ask Jonathan or Councilmember Bingle to explain the differences between the two?
Yep.
Yeah. And I tried to put that in the email there. The quick difference is, is that while we had, you know, possession sort of mentioned in the drug loitering provision, it wasn't explicitly stated on its own. And so we added a place for possession, and we also made it an emergency ordinance. And I believe those were the two big changes that happened in the, in the ordinance from the safe open spaces that was previously proposed and deferred.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Any other discussion about Councilmember Bingle's motion to substitute his ordinance? Councilmember Kinnear.
So the loitering piece is still in there. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
All right. Hearing no discussion. All those in favor of the motion for substitution indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed, nay?
Nay.
No.
No. Excuse me. No. Sorry. Any abstentions? Okay. That motion to substitute doesn't pass at this point. Are there any motion?
At this point, I move to defer indefinitely ordinance C36379 because at this point, they're fundamentally different, that it doesn't cover possession.
Is there a second?
Well, it-
Wait, wait. I'm waiting to see if there's a second, Councilmember, and then I'll get you, unless you're seconding it. I'm sure you're not.
I'll second.
Okay. Second. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah. I mean, we, we tried to add possession just now, which you could have easily voted for and then voted against it, you know, based on its, you know, on its own. But, you know, it, it, there was clearly the intent of it and exactly what we were trying to, to accomplish with it. So I think that's a bad reason to say we're tabling it because it didn't do this. We tried to add it, and you just said no.
Any other discussion? The motion to defer?
Well, I will just, I will just say, I mean, I think this is a pretty, it's pretty straightforward, and it's frankly elegant in its simplicity, and I think it really gets where we need to go on, on open use specifically. I still prefer two ordinances rather than one comprehensive. I think it makes more sense. I think we should deal with open use a little differently than possession personally. But I still think that this is a good ordinance, and I think it should continue.
Councilmember Kinnear.
And I think our, you know, we have to ask ourselves, what are we trying to accomplish? What are we trying to accomplish? The main thing is to limit and/or eliminate drug deaths by overdose. And if you just confine it to open spaces, you're not going to do that. Most of the drug overdoses take place inside buildings or houses or at parties. So to just limit it to open spaces is not doing what we needed to do.
Well, I agree, and I'm not suggesting we do. That's why I, again, I think we should have, personally, I think we should have two ordinances, one on possession, one on open use regardless of the matter. I mean, I think, to me, this isn't about, this isn't as much about drug deaths with regards to the open use aspect of this as it is about community safety. I don't want, and I'm, I'm not going to take my child to a party with fentanyl. I'm not going to take my child to somebody's, you know, apartment with fentanyl, but I might be in an open space, and I come across somebody with fentanyl, and that is scary as hell. And in fact, it happened to me yesterday. I had my child downtown crossing the Monroe Street Bridge, and some people were in one of the alcoves smoking their fentanyl. And by the time I knew what it was, it was too late. I can't turn around. I can't go forward. You've already encountered it. This crap has to end.
I'm not going to debate this. Good.
Yeah. I guess if I could, Council-
Yes. Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah. I mean, you know, it would have been great if we were, you know, all sort of in a place where it was like, yeah, we want to do this. You know, this negotiation, I guess, could have happened, you know, the work on this ordinance together, which, you know, I've, I've come and spoken with, with every council member about, you know, what are things that are a big deal to you? How can we make it work? That sort of thing. It would have been great at that time if, if you had serious concerns with, you know, possession or something like that, if we had added that. And I, I think that in a couple of my meetings, I think specifically with Council President Beggs and Councilmembers Oppone, I think we, we did talk about those things. But those were things that, again, we were, we were working on to, to make this ordinance as good as it could have been. And I guess it's frustrating that, you know, this ordinance, for whatever reason, you know, didn't have the, you know, cooperation on it to, to get it going forward as, as we were going. And I totally get it. You know, we do the same thing sometimes with, with, with ordinances when we find out that there's a fundamental difference. But, you know, Council President and I on Thursday talked for about an hour, and we were pretty close, I thought, on, on a lot of things. We had some, some major differences, obviously, with site and release and some other things. But it felt like, you know, this ordinance could have been amended to be the right thing. And so, you know, just a procedural frustration with, with how this went down because, again, we, you know, based on where the other one ended up, you know, it was, it was kind of close to where we were getting outside of a couple of minor changes. And so that's it. Just wish that we could have got that input a little bit sooner, especially after it got deferred, you know, for a, for a good long time. We could have, we could have worked on it.
All right. Any other discussion? All right. All those in favor of deferring indefinitely ordinance C36379 indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, no?
No.
No.
Any abstentions? All right. That's deferred. And then that is the end of changes on the agenda. I think I'll go ahead and get the briefing done on that completely new items that we looked at. We've already talked about the possession and public use ordinance in depth, but let's go to the eviction assistance consent items, SBOs. Yeah.
I just received the updated version of the, of the other version.
Yeah. The one, the one that, that removes, that allows the police to book and has the ordinance number on it?
Yeah. The, that removed the, the site and release.
Yeah.
Was that distributed earlier? Or, because I just got it at like 3:30.
No, it was distributed at 3:30, so.
We made the change based on the testimony of Assistant Chief Lundgren and Mary Mirmatsu.
Yep. At Public Safety. That's the only change, is that removal of that and the addition of that ordinance number. All right. I'm going to invite Mr. Viviano to the podium to brief all things eviction rent assistance.
Good afternoon, Council. Good to see you all again. It's been some time. Council President, staff members. And it's fairly self-explanatory. We've been doing this now for three years, two and a half years, and this is the final round. We know that because the contracts are ending at the federal, state, and now at the local level as well with our subrecipients. So I do apologize to once again have a very tight timeline, but unfortunately, the program has not gotten less chaotic over time, and rather in some ways more so because there's a reallocation process. So pulling money back from jurisdictions that haven't spent theirs, giving it to jurisdictions that still have demands, such as the city of Spokane. We still have a functional COVID team, and you're looking at it for the moment. So that's one of the reasons we're able to say yes. Some other jurisdictions would have liked to have had it, but don't have the staff to process it. So we're in a kind of unique situation, and I think overall, we should all feel really good about how this program has unfolded, the amount of assistance we've provided. With this particular round of funding, one of the reasons it was so urgent for me to secure the funding and get it out to the community is that the good news is we have the funding, the not-so-good news is it's already spent. So this isn't something that's going to allow us to reopen the portal, accept more applications because it's a pretty inexact science when we open up the application portal. We did so between December and February with the subrecipients. We did our calculations of how many applications we should accept based on current funding, and it ended up being about 200, 250 applications off. That's partially because of rates of fraud, for example, being lower maybe than expected, not necessarily fraud, but rejected applications for one reason or another. Average application maybe was higher than we anticipated. So we have applications that are currently pending approval, pending payment. That's where we're going to get a lot of phone calls from landlords asking, you know, is this accurate? When are we going to get it? So the idea is that in order to allow the subrecipients time to get the money out to the community before the contracts end on June 30th, we need to get this out there sooner than later. So again, thank you for your willingness to fast-track it as much as possible within council rules. Councilman?
Yeah. Real quick. I guess what percentage-ish would be left after this goes through the system? How many, how many more applications or what, what's the value of that that's left? And then is this still covering just folks with rental deficiencies kind of in that emergency year, months? Basically, the, what, 16, 18 months that we had the declared emergency? Is that still the, the time period that we're focused on?
Yeah. So we're still, this is still a COVID program very much, and I think I've understood your question in terms of separating out now. We're getting into some of those longer-term conversations. So Commerce is starting to introduce some funding. It's a very small comparison, but starting to say, okay, obviously, the need for rental assistance isn't going to disappear. So CHHS recently released a request for proposals for a longer-term one that's bundled into a long-term CHG grant. This is the final gasp of this Treasury, you know, $25 billion in assistance, very specific guidelines that Treasury provides. Those then get added to by Commerce and then transferred down to us. So the idea is that we wouldn't accept an application if we don't anticipate paying for it, right? So we do provide caveats on our application portal. There's no guarantee of funding just because you apply. But the goal is to not leave anybody hanging who's sitting there six or seven weeks thinking they're going to get money, and then they don't. This amount of money actually just kind of coincidentally almost should be almost exactly the amount of money we need to cover all currently pending applications. So the reason that, unlike previous rounds where we were allowed to kind of guesstimate how much a provider might need, on this particular round, we were pretty much required to, just as we were required as a city to demonstrate to Commerce how much we needed, we required our subrecipients to show us what they needed rather than tell us. And because Forward was the one that had the portal open most recently, they're the ones who are going to get the bulk of that to pay these pending applications. The smaller organizations are much more, they have an anticipated ongoing need. They couldn't really tell me a specific waiting list or anything like that. So I said, well, let's get you some money, make sure that you're not completely high and dry for the final six weeks of the program. But they don't have that tangible demand that, that Forward has right now. Councilman or councilmember?
So what happens to funds that have not been dispersed on June 30th?
That would get into the kind of nitty-gritty of the contracts of Commerce has a system for getting those-
Pullback.
Yeah, pullback. I don't anticipate that being something other than maybe just some small amounts here or there that are lingering. One of the things, too, that Commerce allows, that Treasury allows is for, they're, they lose- lose in the rules, the closer you get to the end of the program to allow for, okay, it might have been really strictly this at the beginning of the program, but if you're a small organization and you have ongoing needs administratively especially, right? A small organization like Crown Maxi Center might not know that they could buy some paper and some just really basic administrative stuff with that. So we'll be working with them to make sure that they don't sell themselves short on what the guidelines might be in the current moment to get this money out.
Any other questions on rental assistance?
One last one. You mentioned that there's some small trickle of money that's related to long term. Is there a program around that? What's the, and if it's a long discussion, we can do it another time, but if you have kind of a 30 seconds.
Yeah, so just to mention that my hope is that I'll be able to give the council, again, I have to think about my future as well, so I'm not sure exactly my timeline, but the hope is to give the council an end of program update summary and make that public and make sure everybody knows where we stand. But I think Jen's up here to give a little bit more of an update on that longer-term funding.
So currently, if you look on the CHHS funding opportunities, we do have an open request for proposals. It's approximately, there's, we're still kind of finalizing some of the dollars because there was some dollars that we're just trying to figure out how to work in, but it's around like $1.2 billion per year, and it's wrapped into our CHG funding. So we'll try to get into contract with an organization or several organizations for July 1st.
And is that specifically earmarked towards rental assistance?
It is specifically eviction prevention dollars, and it's very similar to the program that Devin's been running.
Okay.
I would just mention on that, one of the key themes of this emergency temporary phase is that it was kind of all or nothing. You put in an application, and almost always the intent was to pay it in full. The longer-term one hopefully will be much more spread out evenly where maybe you just get one month of assistance in order to avoid, a little bit more targeted to make sure that it gets spread out more evenly instead of all, you know, a big chunk of it going towards only a couple of households.
All right.
Thank you all very much again.
Thank you, Devin. You make a lot of people happy.
Yep.
All right, is there someone here to brief the fire miscellaneous grants?
Good afternoon, thank you, Council. This grant is a FEMA grant for our smoke alarm installation program. It covers two years. Our match of the grant is 5%, and it's coming from Jamie McIntyre, our Community Risk Reduction Manager's hours to put in and manage the grant. So we typically focus, as you know, from our other smoke alarm programs for low income and that. One portion of this grant will be working with Isaac Foundation and autistic kids for lower temporal type alarms and specialized alarms for that group. So that'll focus on 10 classes that we give in that community and purchasing some of those specialized alarms that might be harder for those families to get.
Can I ask a question? How, is it just the tone? Is that what's different about it?
Yeah, what we have found over time is some of the autistic population, those higher pitch tonal frequencies are much harder, and they tend to affect those kids more, where they kind of shut down, right? And forget some of that training on how to get out of the house or what they're supposed to do. So at one point, there were some voice alarms that are more of a softer tone like you hear in a large, high-rise building or public facility structure that actually tells you what to do. Some of those types of alarms, as they hopefully get reUL listed, we can bring those in, or just a different temporal tone that's at a lower frequency for those folks. Councilmember?
Would that accommodate the deaf community as well?
Yes, yes, some of those specialized alarms, we already do with our program. And so we always make sure that we have those available to install as needed for deaf and hard of hearing.
All right, thanks so much. All right, interlocal agreement with WashDOT on installing conduit? There's Mike. Come on in.
Good afternoon, Council. This item was added, OPR 20230473, is a request to approve a joint effort with WashDOT. They're doing work in northeast section of the city. And it's in our, last minute opportunity for us to put in some conduit into their project. This will expand our opportunity to get fiber into the northeast PDA and for the broadband initiative. So this just came to our attention. It's just a quick window of opportunity for us to be able to put some conduit for those later expansions. So this is just a request for our portion of this contract. Any questions? Thank you.
Great, thanks. All right, I think that's all for tonight's agenda. Now we'll go to our traditional briefing of the advanced agenda. I'll turn it over to Mr. Piccolo sitting in for Mr. Perkins.
And just to clarify, was special consideration one added in?
Wasn't that already on the agenda?
No, it was added. It's this consideration of the mayor of retail of ordinance C 36373.
Okay, I thought that was already added to the agenda, so thank you.
Council President? Since rules are still suspended, I'll make a motion that we add C 36373 as a special consideration.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All of those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Any abstentions? All right. That is added. All right. Anything else on tonight's agenda we haven't dealt with? All right, hearing and seeing none, turn it over to Mr. Piccolo.
Thank you. So tonight's consent agenda, item number one is a five-year value blanket with Allied Envelope, and Brian Coddington will brief this item.
Good afternoon, members of council. This is a five-year value blanket contract with Allied Envelopes to provide envelopes for the next five years largely to submit the utility bills. We do about $2 million a year, $500,000 a quarter or so, some odds and ends that are not utility bill related, but that's primarily what this is for. Any questions?
Have we ever had you down here asking for money before? I don't know.
Once or twice maybe, but it's rare.
All right, well, good to see you. Thanks.
All right, thanks.
The next three items will be briefed by Clint Harris, and they relate to traffic paint, additional road salt, and liquid de-icer. And I can't help but to think we're approaching 80-degree weather, and he's thinking about winter.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council. The street department's seeking approval to purchase traffic paint at a cost not to exceed $150,000 annually, using pricing on Washington State contract 02817 and Pierce County contract SC 109061. Item three is the street department's requesting approval to add $42,555.27 to the purchasing allocation for the road salt due to larger-than-anticipated needs prompted by the winter season. And then for item number four, the street department's also requesting approval to add $172,644.76 to the purchasing allocation for liquid de-icer due to larger-than-anticipated purchasing needs prompted by the winter season. Yes, ma'am?
On the first one, number two, is the paint PCB free?
Say that again?
Is the paint PCB free?
It is the most environmentally friendly paint we can find.
Okay. So you're not sure?
It's close, but not perfect. PCVs are in everything.
I know.
Yeah, but it's the most environmentally friendly we can find.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Items number five and six will be briefed by Rick Giddings, and they're relating to road, load truck chassis and supply of renewable natural gas.
Thanks, Mr. Piccolo. I'm also briefing item number eight. Would you like me to do that one also?
Yep.
Okay. Item number five is the purchase of three CNG refuse trucks with LaBree rear-loaded bodies for solid waste collections. This is purchased, they'd be purchased from Dobbs Peterbilt out of LaBree Lake using two Sourcewell contracts, total expenditure $1.5 million, including sales tax. Item six is a contract with Moss Energy to supply the city with renewable natural gas for use in our solid waste collection fleet. Moss Energy is a leading producer of renewable natural gas, and their product is generated 100% with dairy digesters, which means that their product they would be giving us, the product that they would be giving us, it would be a negative carbon content. So their carbon intensity no higher than negative 250 grams of CO2 equivalent per megajoule. So it's great stuff. We essentially swapped the purchase of CNG for renewable natural gas using the same distribution system. We don't change anything. Moss Energy then just navigates through the Washington CFS program and trades our renewable ID numbers, RINs, on the market. So according to their estimates, the City of Spokane's share of these credits should generate revenue averaging $260,000 a year for our current usage, and our usage is going up, so that number's also going to go up. So if we combine that with the alternative fuel tax credit that we briefed Council on a couple of months ago, our usage of renewable natural gas will generate credits in excess of what we are currently paying for CNG. So that, basically what that means is our CNG refuse fleet will be carbon negative, and achieving this will generate revenue. So any questions on that?
That's great news.
Yeah, it is great news. And then item eight is the, we briefed this a couple of weeks ago. This is a request to amend OPR 2022572 to allow for the substitution of non-hybrid K8 police interceptors. Just, and I don't know how much detail you want me to go in, but I will, just as a kind of recap, Bud Clary informed us that Ford will not be able to produce all the K8 hybrids that are on order nationwide. So we would like to amend the OPR to read, allow the purchase of up to 46 K8 police interceptors, ordering primarily the hybrid electric model over the standard internal combustion model as manufacturing constraints allow. So allowing the substitution just helps us to avoid added expense and more delays on our police fleet. As councilmember?
What's the wait time right now?
We don't know. We don't actually have any schedule to be built right now at this time. And so the factory, the K8 hybrid factory, the factory that builds the hybrids is scheduled to close down sometime in July. And so anything that is not scheduled by the time, that can be built by the time that factory closes down will be canceled. That's our understanding.
So permanently closed?
No. No, I think closed for upfitting. I'm not exactly sure. They haven't really said why they're closing it, but they'll be closing it. A lot of times they'll do that to upgrade for the model, the next model year, and there's some other things, but they won't be building the same model year anymore after July.
What you had said, I think we're going to hear from May, how many of our orders are going to be fulfilled?
We think so, yeah. This is a, it's a, these are a lot of hearsay involved in this, but Bud Clary, our Ford dealer, tends to think about May, if there's, if we don't have hybrids scheduled, that that's when they're going to make the announcement that they're going to cancel the remainder.
Before, they had a strategy of asking us to cancel our hybrid orders in hopes that we would, but is there a way that we can not cancel and then, so we can get, I mean, if we get, we don't know yet, but if we're going to get allocated from this next two months of getting built, I would hate to cancel those.
Yeah, and it's a great question. And our intent, for, our intent, to be clear, is to purchase as many of the hybrids as we possibly can. The reason that we wanted to make that substitution is because it was stated to us by Bud Clary that we would get, we would increase our chances of getting all of our vehicles built and get earlier build slots.
But couldn't we also just authorize additional ones rather? I'm just worried we're going to cancel them, and if we're going to get 20 of them, we will have given up those 20 that were going to be coming before July. So that seems like counterintuitive.
If we, I mean, to go with, to go with internal combustion, standard internal combustion?
Not, well, I'm wondering what the mechanism, if you could think about for the next week, of not canceling any, we've already put in our orders, right? And we're waiting to hear how many. But Bud Clary's earlier suggestion was for us to cancel all those orders. And I'm just saying, I don't think we should cancel them. So if we can figure out a way with finance or different ways to do that so that we don't cancel the opportunity for the hybrids, but give you the ability for whatever doesn't get built to do that. So before we get to a vote, I would love to have that, I'm going to say vehicle, to do that, figure that out.
Yeah, I think if we can get the players in the same room or on the same chat and talk that out, I think that's a viable.
Because it, because it could make it worse. If we cancel the ones that we're going to get in June.
No, and it is important to note, though, that the order bank is closed, so it's not like we can order more. They're giving us the opportunity to substitute voluntarily, but we can talk to Bud Clary and see if there's a method that we, where we can do this.
And, yeah, that's the thing, is before we order new ones, let's find out how many we're going to get, but let's definitely not cancel any that are going to be allocated to us.
Okay. Any other questions?
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I wanted to say, I agree with Council President, if that's possible, is if we know they're not going to be able to fulfill the order anyway, canceling this order might, again, set us back a little bit. And so being able to just have them fulfill whatever portion of the order they can and then reordering something like that might be the faster way for us to get those vehicles. So I'd be interested to know what possibilities there are along those routes.
And we'll explore that, and, but just to be clear, we're not technically canceling orders, we are substituting orders. And that's the, that's the important part to know, that we get a one-for-one swap for not, for standard combustion engines for the hybrids that we are going to be changing. So, but, but yeah, I think that a conversation is merited for that, and so we'll do some talking tomorrow with Bud Clary and see if there's any avenue that we can pursue.
Great.
All right, thank you.
Going back to number seven, we have a five-year value blanket with Two Rivers Terminal for citric acid. And Mike Cannon. Oh, okay.
Kyle Arrington. So, thanks, Mr. Piccolo, Council. I'd, number seven is for a request for approval to award a five-year value blanket to Two Rivers Terminal LLC to supply a 50% citric acid solution to the wastewater treatment facility. The total for the five-year contract will be $987,812.50, and it's using the cleaning process at the membrane facility in a combination with other chemicals at diluted concentrations. Does anyone have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Kyle. Number nine is a master contract renewal with FA Bartlett Tree Expert and Thea Prince. Nope, another substitution.
Good afternoon, Council and Mr. Piccolo. Jason Nekonoski, Director of Purchasing Contracts, so requesting approval for a final renewal of a master contract with Bartlett Tree Expert Company for on-call arborist service for multiple city departments not to exceed $250,000 through April 30, 2024. Any questions? Thank you.
And the next three items, 10, 11, and 12, Dan Buller will brief those. Is Dan here? So we have the amendment to the consulting agreement with HDR, number 10. Number 11 is the low bid on the Garland Avenue pathway with Shaw Middle School. And then number 12 is the low bid on the High System Additional Reservoir Project. So I will get ahold of Dan and figure out what's going on there. Number 13 is a special counsel contract with KNL Gates, and we have Levy Shale from the legal department.
Good afternoon. This is a contract amendment for our contract with Craig Trueblood of KNL Gates. He represents the City of Spokane on the city's case against Department of Ecology on our NPDS appeal. So we're asking to add $100,000 to that contract. We do have a trial date set for September, and I'm hoping that we'll get through that. Any questions? Thank you.
The next three items, 14, 15, and 16, will be briefed by Mike Sloan.
Good afternoon again, Council. Item one is a value blanket with CompuNet for the purchase of Cisco hardware products network. That's our standard product that we purchase. And it is, excuse me, set up for a value blanket. This is similar to what I've requested probably for the last decade, is to establish a scenario I've requested probably for the last decade, is to establish a scenario where we can purchase equipment from them without coming back every time when we place an order. This is based on our capital replacement. So we have investment of several millions of dollars of hardware. And as they become end of life and we do the replacement, this is a type of coverage so that we don't have to keep coming back to you whenever the cycle through. So again, asking to approve a value blanket not to exceed 450,000. Note, this was delayed. We usually do this in January for this coverage, but because we switched to another, what we call value-added reseller, Compunit, it was delayed in our efforts to get all this in place, transferring it from a previous vendor. Okay, item number 15. This is contract for General Technologies Incorporated. This is the annual maintenance and support of city's legal case management system. JTI was deemed sole source provider. This is the product that we have been developed, that courts have been developing with JTI, and this is just a renewal for their annual support. And then lastly, CareSoft for Salesforce license. And on this one, there is an item, as I promised you in the past, is when a, when there's a contract increase, if there's any significant changes. This one is, does increase, and it's, there was a few more licenses added, and then their annual increase that we're seeing from all of our vendors. We try to keep it at 3%, but contractually, some of them are a little bit higher. So that's the, the third item, asking for your approval. Any questions on those three? Awesome. Thank you.
Number 17 is an MOU between the city and SNAP, and Corinne Morse will brief this one.
Good afternoon, counsel. This is requesting approval of a memo of understanding and agreement with Spokane Neighborhood Action Programs, or SNAP, to establish and manage a program for applicant qualification for low-income households to be able to provide transparent and fair utility bill cost relief to our city residents. Any questions? Thank you.
Number 18 is the assistance award involving ARPA money and the Small Business Assistance Award, and Michelle Murray will brief this item.
Good afternoon, council president and council members. I am here to ask for your approval to award an additional 28 organizations about $710,000. We had, the original NOFO went out in November 22nd, 2022. Applications closed on December 21st, but we reopened the application with some additional parameters to award an additional 28 awards. And those awards are listed in your packet and the organizations that they're going to. Any questions? All right, thank you.
Number 19 is the new access agreement for an existing cell tower at Dwight Merkel. Dave Steele will address this one.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. This, the document you have before you is actually a draft. The final descriptions, as was pointed out by Mr. Wright. The legal description still referred to the parks parcel to the north. So the updated one will be in your packet before next week. This provides access to the tower that sits on the cemetery property. It's been there for decades at this point. They used to come through the Joe Alby parcel. Well, now that that's been sold off, we had to come up with a new access route for them, for their lines and stuff. So this will run across just strictly general front property, does not impact the parks. And we'll get the updated legal descriptions to go with. The exhibit is correct, but the legal descriptions are incorrect. So any questions? Thank you.
Number 20 is a placeholder for pending claims and payments. And 21 is a placeholder for city council meeting minutes. Going to the SBOs.
Here's Dan's here.
Oh, come on down, Dan. Thank you for coming down.
My apologies. We were fortunate enough to hire a construction relations manager after eight months of looking. I was training that person and I spaced it. My apologies. Item 10, proposed budget increase for the agreement with HGR for on-call civil engineering services in the amount of $300,000. This is one of a number of on-call contracts we have for outside engineering assistance. Funds expended into this contract are reimbursed by various city public works projects. Item 11 is the proposed low bid contract for the Garland pathway near Shaw Middle School. It's a blank agenda item. As you can see, we just opened bids at 115. Bids and qualifications will be reviewed today and tomorrow, and the final recommendation awarded to the city council on next week's current agenda. The low bidder was 1.3 million, which is slightly less than our engineer's estimate. And the name slips me, but it's a name that we have worked with a number of times. Project will construct a 10-foot, 12-foot wide trail on the north side of Garland, connecting Shaw Middle School, the Northeast Community Center, Hilliard Library, on the west end to DOT's forthcoming Children of the Sun Trail on the east end where it just was. Three bids were received. Actually, it's NA Deggerstrom is the low bidder. Pending final review, the low bid appears to be about $200,000 less than the engineer's estimate. Work is expected to start later this spring and last through the summer. And last one, item 12, proposed low bid contract for the high system tank, blank agenda item. Again, we just opened bids. Bids and qualifications were reviewed today. Final recommendation to you by next week's agenda. The apparent low bidder is Landmark Construction, well-known national firm constructing tanks, and they're the ones constructing the tank out by the airport right now. This project will construct 100-foot tall, approximately 2 million gallon tank on unused property in the northeast corner of Hamblin Elementary at about Crestline and 39th. Site was selected after a lengthy outreach process and evaluation effort. This water tank will serve all of the South Hill. Also included is about 800 feet of water main to connect the proposed reservoir to 37th and Crestline. That'll be done after school is out of session, so as to not impact the bus route on Crestline to the adjacent Hamblin Elementary. Two bids were received and were about $3 million less than the engineer's estimate. Work's expected to start when school lets out in June and be completed sometime in 2025. Again, my apologies.
Thanks, Dan. That takes care of the consent agenda. Going to the SBOs. The first SBO deals with the real estate excise tax fund, and Kim McComman will address this one, and this also relates to projects at TRACK.
Good afternoon, counsel. So again, this is to move that, that REIT funding to be able to provide that $1 million that we need for the improvements for TRACK. This is what is going to get us the restrooms and the shower facilities, as well as laundry facilities, and a dishwashing sink inside TRACK. So this is, is a request from REIT 2.
And good afternoon as well. Excuse me. This will also help reduce the cost of TRACK, some of the operations by about $1 million, which would be a return over the next two years if it was approved. Also, this was actually on the PIES last week for discussion, and so I wanted to just stress that there's a difference in the SBO. There's been some conversations since we did the briefing paper. There's 1 million showing up in the SBO as far as REIT, sorry, REIT 1?
REIT 2.
REIT 2. As, and you'll see in the briefing paper, there's 450,000 that's coming, hoping to come out of ARPA. So, and Tanya can talk to that a little bit as well, but I just wanted to make sure I added that in as well. Yes.
How is it hoping to come out of ARPA? Is it petitioning you personally?
Probably, probably my bad wording on that one had been talked about. Sorry.
Thank you, council members. The briefing paper that was submitted way in advance of the committee identified 1 million from REIT 2 for this, for this project, as well as an additional 450,000 from ARPA. There had since been some informal conversations since that briefing paper was submitted about using the amount that is already allocated, the 4 million of ARPA that's already allocated for our homelessness services, to help support the 450,000. In total, we need 1.45 million to support the capital project that will in turn in 2024, 2025, save on the operational costs.
And you don't need to do an SBO to use the already allocated ARPA. You could just do that.
We do not need an SBO if the ARP is already allocated. However, that changes the item that you now saw and talked about at committee today of 3.9 million, because that was also submitted prior to the informal conversations that took place afterwards. So the 3.9 million for operations support, if we use part of the 4 million that is intended for, for operations, and we use 450,000 of that, then that 3.9 million moves up to 4.35 million to support the operations. So there is this dependency on what you decide on the capital piece. In total, it's 1.45 million that is needed. What happens there impacts the operation. 1.45, 3.9, total amount that it's needed is 5.35 needed.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah. Has there, has there been any cost comparison, RFPs, to see how we could deliver these services otherwise, so we know that this is the cheapest possible way?
For, for the restroom improvements?
Restroom, the food, the commercial kitchen, all that good stuff.
Well, I, yes, I, I don't know, I can't speak to the facilities piece of it in terms of the review they did. This is based on the architect's kind of estimate and assessment, which I think this, this funding would approve us going through basically to get to the RFP level. So, I mean, it's kind of like a public works project in a way where, you know, we come forward with the best estimate we have. Ultimately, then we get the RFP, you know, things. That's one reason why, even, even though it's the 450 ask from, you know, 250, that is actually for a 25% contingency because there's unknowns, right? I mean, what is the water main going to look like when we connect to it? We have to upsize some of that plumbing, you know, to, to help make sure we can facilitate the restrooms and the laundry, et cetera. So, so I think that, that, I think the answer to yours would come in subsequent RFP efforts in terms of, you know, the contractors coming back with their actual construction.
I guess I don't, I don't mean bids for the work. I mean, alternative ways of delivering the service. So instead of putting in a commercial kitchen, using a different provider to provide food, a different provider to provide the, the restroom facilities, et cetera.
Well, yeah, and there, and there's limited choices certainly in our region as it relates to, I think, the, you know, the portable toilets and the shower units. Now, the shower unit, the additional shower unit that we added was actually a county purchased item, you know, on behalf of the shelter. So some of those costs were, you know, were, you know, incurred using some county funds in support. So I think that, you know, the hard part about, I think, you know, the ongoing maintenance and support is that outside facilities, especially in the wintertime, are, you know, take a little bit of care and, and attention to do, and they're certainly not as convenient in quality of life aspect of it as, was certainly not designed to be necessarily, I think, the long-term option. It is always going to be seen as a little more expensive option, obviously, than if you have them internally. So, so not a lot of options there as it relates to, you know, the, the outside showers and toilet facilities. And I, I would, and we can include you, when we've kind of crosswalked this with fire, and the wildland fire piece, when they do clinical emergency response for fires, these shower units and portable toilets, they're expensive. I mean, especially expensive to do long-term. So not a lot of options there. Now, on the laundry side, there, we've looked at basically like, you know, vouchers or cards that, you know, at local laundry facilities, but transportation is always a challenge there. It's not like they can just walk down necessarily and use a local laundromat. You know, so that's, that's been a little bit of a barrier or challenge to present some other good options. Right now, we've, this, this doesn't include a full commercial kitchen. This is just basically, you know, helping on the dishwashing piece of it. And I know that the current operator went through, I think, an internal process to change, because the vendor they were going to use for food, I think, had, was going to go from $10 to $20, I believe, a day in terms of meals. And they were able to get another vendor, which I think was Blessings Under the Bridge, for 15. So they are actively doing those things to try to right-size the expenses where they can. But a commercial kitchen, which would be another investment, certainly is the only way to really drastically reduce, you know, meal costs, because then you're preparing them internally and saving some of those, you know, delivery and outsourcing costs. So we have looked at those things. This is the best rubric that we've been able to come up with for the improvements.
No, I appreciate it. Last thing I'll just say, I, I would, I would love it if we could hold off on making this decision until we've had an opportunity to talk more about the, the long-term financial end of TRACK, because putting one and a half million into a building we don't own, can't afford to buy, the owner doesn't want to sell, sell to us, doesn't make a lot of sense if we don't know how we're going to pay to operate eight months from now. So I think we have to have that conversation before we make this decision.
Understood.
I just want to add to that, the two-year, the two-year window isn't entirely accurate because if we approve the money right today, there's going to be some ramp-up time to get contractors to actually get all this stuff installed. So we're going to still be bearing the costs of showers, porta-potties, et cetera, for another six months after we approve this. So you have to add on those costs as well. And so it's not just this, it's the additional.
Yes, and, and all I can say is that's one of the reasons why, at least I'm as anxious as I can to try to figure out how we can move forward, understanding the big-picture, you know, piece of it is, and sustainability is important. But every month lost is also a, you know, a month farther to kind of get to that better break even.
Do we know how long this construction would take to do all the bathrooms and stuff?
I, yeah.
That's part of the reason why we were really pushing this SBO forward ahead of the operational. One is because we need to go through the bid process. Architects are already engaged. This is the construction season. It will take a minimum of six months. But we're also looking at six to eight weeks of a bid process as well.
And, and to kind of go on councilmember Cathcart's point, do we have an idea of how long we are expecting to continue to be in this building?
Well, so, you know, I think that as we've gone through, and we can, and we go through planning cycles all the time, the, where the original intent, you know, of, of TRACK was only to be kind of a bridge for two or three years, the option that potentially would have, you know, would have, you know, come through, you know, you know, another provider has, has now been taken off the table, right? So, so we see this as a, as a longer-term option for, for the city, until we can come up with either a better scattered site model, or some other, you know, you know, facility or otherwise that, that we might want to use that is, in some ways, you know, delivers a better, better level of service, or at a better cost. So right now, this is, this is the best option that we have.
Can you remind us when this lease ends and what renewal options we have under the current lease?
I can do my best from memory, but, you know, it was, I think, a five-year lease. So, you know, starting last year around July. So, I mean, I think that would put it out into the 2027 timeframe. And I, and we do have, I think, the right built in to do another five-year following that. But I'd have to look at the terms honestly to, to answer that. I can, I can send that in an email.
I think that resonates with my memory as well, but thanks. Councilmember's a point.
So am I hearing correctly, then, it's definitely longer term than three years, probably longer than five years? Is that right?
Well, I, I think that based on what I'm seeing right now, I mean, we'd have to generate new options for you to consider, to, because at the end of the day, I think we're always in the process, and let's face it with a complex subject like with this. I think the, the first better option we have on any number of programs will really win, but we're not there yet. And so I think at the end of the day, we do have to kind of reinforce success. And I, I think that as much as there's been some of the negatives and some of the things that we've had to work through, it is helping an awful lot of people, and it's one of the first sites we've been able to activate that has services on-site for, for the population there. So it is a step in the right direction, albeit it is not perfect.
And to kind of follow up, councilmember Cathcart mentioned about the buy, the purchase option. I haven't really heard an update where that was. I know that we passed something trying to pursue that. I've heard different values have come in from the appraiser.
I think we'd have to get the city administrator to kind of respond to that once he's back.
I can tell you. So we did get an appraisal back. The owner chose an appraiser. We agreed to them. The appraisal came back at about 4 million or 4.1. There's nothing in the contract we had that requires the owner to use that. And my understanding is he would like about twice that much if he was going to voluntarily sell. So right now, it's not there. Does the city have options to do eminent domain based on the appraisal that he, he chose the appraiser? Yes, that has its own complications. But there's nothing imminent as far as a purchase.
Double that, 8 million. Okay, wow. And then... And then I had a question about, I don't remember, it was something about other options. Oh, do we have numbers about people who are exiting Track, like total that they're seeing, total that are exiting to housing? I know that we just had a presentation from Family Promise, and they did a great job of telling us their numbers of everyone they see and how that moves through. I don't know if we have that for all of our providers, especially Track on top of that, because it is supposed to be that resource center. People aren't supposed to be warehoused there.
Yeah, so Jen, we'll talk about the monitoring piece that's underway.
Hi, so yeah, we do have tracking mechanisms in place to see where people are exiting to. At Track, we would have two different options. We have the Revive exits, and then we have the options for people who are just staying at Track and have not engaged in services. I will say that if somebody is not engaged in services, sometimes our outcomes are not very well trackable, because people will leave and they don't tell us where they're going, right? So they might leave. We don't know if they got permanent housing, if they went to a campsite, et cetera. So I would say from the Salvation Army side, and we're in the process of beginning our monitoring with them, we have less quality data simply because it's a night-by-night shelter. But the Revive services, folks that are enrolled in that, we do have better quality data on that, and I'd be glad to report that out probably in the next month or two. That'd be helpful.
But we have it for the other shelters, too.
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, we report out system-level data in terms of where people are exiting to across all of our systems.
Can we get that data sooner than?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, so let me get with Daniel on the timeline for the system-level data, because it's usually annual. So I'll see what I can come up with.
Thank you, Jen. You're done.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have no emergency ordinances. We have two resolutions, both dealing with the reduction of speed limits, and Clint Harris will brief these two items, these two resolutions.
The street department's proposing resolutions to reduce the speed limit on certain arterials to a seasonal playground, a speed limit of 20 miles per hour. This is housekeeping to what used to exist previously before some changes were made. There is an exhibit, so the resolution is 2023-0035, and there's an exhibit in your packet with the locations. The second resolution the street department is proposing is for a reduction of speed limit on Belt. There's been a school built, as well as some other, the speed limit through that area was kind of challenging, so to clean it up and to make it consistent, we're proposing to move the speed limit 20 miles an hour from Rockwell to Wellesley, and that, there's a lot of youth activities, playground, or, I'm sorry, pool, library, and some other facilities.
Is that 24/7?
24/7.
And is there, because we're looking at other locations, there's some type of study that you do around to justify that?
No, this was just, well, the school was recently remodeled and built, and so they installed a 20 wind flashing, and so it was very confusing through that area. And so this is just an effort to clean it up and to make it consistent.
And Councilmember, can yours, whispering to me that it's not an arterial, this is not an arterial?
Belt is.
Okay.
No, I said typically, he tells, typically we're told that the studies are done on arterials in order to change the speeds, correct?
That is correct.
But that's what I'm trying to get, like if there's other arterials that Council thinks should be changed, what do we need to do to do that? Is there a?
Well, we have the traffic study from last season that we could refer to if you would like to see what it is.
So then there was some type of study done?
We have information from the speeds that were retained last year, but we haven't done a study from, because it was very convoluted with the speed changes through there, but we could certainly do it.
Well, I'm not asking you to. Just to be clear, I'm just saying, okay, great, sounds like a very rational decision, but there's other places in the city where people are asking for the same thing, and we've been told, I can't remember, that we have to do some type of study to, before we make that same kind of determination. I'm just, I want to know what that path is.
Well, the, so what's qualifying this is because of the youth activities in that area, where some of the other changes, you know, this one's got certain features that are a little bit different.
So like playgrounds, schools?
Playgrounds, pools, yeah. And that's specifically different in R C W.
Okay, I got it. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Thanks.
We have no final reading ordinance. The first reading ordinance, Catherine Miller will brief this one regarding amendments to the S M C relating to water.
Made you wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So ordinance C 36383 is amending S M C 13.04.2025. Marlene briefed this last week at Pies, talking about amending the language that was specific calling, specifically calling out meter sizes for multifamily, to remove that in lieu of, obviously, as Marlene shared, going with either engineered analysis or going with the code to call out those fixtures. So again, just cleaning up some of our code language around the recent G F C ordinance that passed.
I don't, we're worn out.
And the last item is the special consideration, S1, regarding a letter to Michelle Weatherly at State Department of Health that was discussed earlier.
And we substituted that and put that for tonight, right? Ms. Pfister, that, we did that correctly?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Great. All right. Thank you, Mr. Piccolo. Is there a motion to adopt the advanced agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? No. Any abstentions? All right, that brings us to the end. We'll see everybody at 6 o'clock our time, or Mr. Councilmember Ringles, 9:00 P. M. So take care. We're adjourned.